The school board reorganization meeting for Tuesday, November the 21st, 2023, 2:05 PM, is officially called to order. We are going to ask Mr. Phil Leary if he will lead us in the pledge, and we'll just use our men, and we're going to ask Mr. David Buckles if he will do the invocation for us.
He was going to be a preacher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow your heads, please. Father, we come to you today, and we ask that you watch over each and every family in our country throughout the world in this serious time of Thanksgiving that we go through and celebrate each year for the many wonderful blessings that we have. We ask that everyone here, when they're through today, they have safe passage and a wonderful holiday until we meet again. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, you pass the gap.
I get to do this once a year?
Am I holding it right?
I didn't take that class.
It's a power thing.
Well, Board at this time, of course, this is a reorganization of the Board, and my understanding, I'm going to need some guidance now, but my understanding is I'll be taking nominations or nomination or whatever the case is, and then, once the new, the chair, whether they're new or not, do they take over from that point, and then, I'm trying to remember, and do the vice chair?
They would. They would.
I believe that's what happened last year.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Were you there last year?
I was.
Golly.
My memory.
Well, Mr.
I've done this like seven times, and I can't remember.
Well, Mr. Chairman, do I go ahead and make a?
Yeah, so at this time, we will entertain nominations for chairs.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep Ms. Gilliard for another year, much the same as we did with Ms. Pickens, and that would be my preference.
Okay, so we have a?
Not that anyone else couldn't do it, but it's.
We have a nomination, so help me understand, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second there. Now, do we entertain any other nominations at this time?
Yes.
Okay, and then we vote on each of them, right?
That's correct.
In order. So, do we have any further nominations?
I just have discussion once you get there.
Okay. Any further nominations? Okay, so do we have a motion for nominations to cease?
That sounds appropriate.
But is Ms. Gilliard willing to?
That's a great question.
I'm fine.
Okay, so, do we need a nomination for, to cease nominations, or people just?
I think that'd be wise.
Okay.
Just in the event of caution.
Since I made, I'll take somebody else to make the motion to nomination.
I move that we close the nominations for our chair.
Okay, and then I need a second that we need to vote on that motion, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, second, so all in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and appears no one's opposed. So, this time, we have a motion on the floor, so discussion before we vote on the motion.
I just, so is it been the practice of the Board for chairmen to serve two-year terms?
I don't think we have any.
Not always, not always. It just sometimes.
It just happened. It started.
Last, we've done it, I've seen it done several times over the years, and it seems to be a way to continue continuity without a lot of learning process, but anybody can figure it out.
There is no, there is no hard and fast rule or specific practice for that.
No, there is no hard and fast rule.
Any other discussion or questions or anything else? Okay, this time, the motion's on the floor for to nominate Ms. Gilliard as chair. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, carries unanimously, so I'll pass this back to you. Didn't get a chance to bang on it. Congratulations, so from there on, if you'll take it.
The floor is now open for the nominations for a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Phil Leary.
I'll second that.
She's in charge.
All right, any other nominations to come before the Board? Can we get a motion to close on the said one name?
I move that we approve the Phil Leary as the vice chairman.
Close the nomination.
Close the nomination, yeah.
On the said second. All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Buckles that we close on the said one name, Mr. Phil Leary, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Are we, any questions, comments at this time? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Our motion carries.
Congratulations to Mr. Leary.
All right, and congratulations, sir.
Oh, okay, that's right, that was the closing, I'm sorry.
Oh, now we got to ask.
We're all mixed up. I didn't mess it up for everybody.
Okay, all right. So now, we voted to close on the said name, all agreed unanimously. Now, all in favor of Mr. Phil Leary being vice chairman for the school board for the 23, 24 year, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposes, none. Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Leary.
Congratulations again.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we're now ready to move into our next item on the agenda, which is our 2023, 2024 meeting dates and times. Mrs. Michaels, will you share with us what you, your reasons for the change, the revision?
We had a conflict in some meeting dates, so got changed, December's, from December 5th and, I believe, the 19th to December 12th, and the February dates got moved to one day, February 12th.
I gave her my sheet of paper.
All right, did she have these? Oh, you're looking at the old one?
The new ones up there have a revised bottom and red.
Excuse me.
I make a motion that we accept the 2023, 2024 meeting dates and times.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the 23, 24 meeting dates and times, and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All right, floor is open for any discussion. Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. All righty, appointment of Board member to serve as Board representative on the small school districts?
I would like to see Mr. Leary with his background in Tallahassee over the years, and his background in being a lobbyist, represent our district in that capacity.
Continue to represent us?
Yes.
Okay, because he is serving, you know, so now again.
I'm going to tell you all, it is a tough job to keep Chris Doolin straight.
I'll second.
He'll fax you everything.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that Mr. Phil Leary serves as our representative for the small school district council, and seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Motion carries. All right, appointment of Board member to serve as Board's representative on the district insurance committee?
Madam Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate to nominate myself, but I would really like to.
You want to see how that works?
Yes.
Let me see, can I, I'll nominate her. I would like to nominate Linda Wagner to sit on that.
Second.
All right, any other nominations to come before us? Let us get a motion then to close on that one name.
I make a motion that we close on that one name.
All right, and it's been seconded, all right. So, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Motion carries. Now, we're ready to vote for her as our representative for the district insurance committee. All in favor of Mrs. Linda Wagner serving as our representative for the district insurance committee, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, appointment of Board member to serve as Board's representative on the expulsion committee. I am still interested. I'm just tossing that out there.
That's good. When you're not ready to do it, I'll step up to it.
Somebody can make a motion, and I feel like I'm hogging all the motions here.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sandy Gilliard as our representative to the expulsion committee.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that I serve, oh, that sounds funny doing that.
But you have to.
Oh, okay.
Or you can say your name instead of aye if you'd like.
That Sandra Gilliard serves as school board representative on the expulsion committee, and seconded by Mr. Phil Leary. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Now, do we need to vote it in? That's good, the way we did it.
I'm sorry, I lost.
Okay, we're going.
You think it's the way we did it?
It's fine, okay. All right, we need the appointment of a member to serve on the calendar committee.
I'd like to nominate Holly Pickens to serve on the calendar committee.
Second.
All right, all in favor of Mrs. Holly Pickens serving on?
Do we have to?
Close for nomination, cease nomination.
Okay, we need to close it, okay. All right, we receive a motion from Mr. David Buck, well, nomination for Mr. Buckles of Holly Pickens, and a second by Mr. Phil Leary. Motion now to close on the said name?
So moved.
All righty, it's been moved by Mr. Phil Leary that we close on the said name, and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens, okay. All right, all in favor of Mrs. Holly Pickens being our calendar representative?
Did you have a comment?
Oh, are we still in closing the nominations?
No, they just voted.
No, we've closed it, and now we're voting.
I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay.
I've gotten, I've gotten mixed up too.
All right, all in favor of Mrs. Holly Pickens, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes, none. Okay? All right, item B8, appointment of Board member to serve on the St. John's River State College Adult Education Advisory Board.
I don't, I thought it was someone.
Mr. Buckles is current.
Oh.
And he's sitting here quiet, saying nothing.
I don't mind because, because of the success we've had in Putnam County and partnering with them. It has been a pleasure to be a part of that. If you guys choose me again, I'll, I will be at their beck and call, but we've got kids that are making more money than they would if they didn't receive a high school diploma or its equivalent, thanks to the efforts of this school district, and it'll be up to you guys if that's what you want.
So we're waiting for a nomination.
I move we nominate David Buckles for the St. John's River State College Adult Education Advisory Board.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Phil Leary that Mr. David Buckles serves as the St. John's River State College Adult Education Advisory Board, and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Motion to close on the said one name?
So moved.
All right, moved by Mr. Phil Leary. We are now ready to vote if there are no?
I'll second that. Did we need a second?
We need, and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, all in favor of Mr. David Buckles serving as our representative?
Closing of the nominations.
We have a close, okay, all right.
You have your, you have your motions, just need to vote.
All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's closed, thank you. And now, all in favor of Mr. David Buckles representing us with the River State College as the College Adult Education Advisory Board representative, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposes, none. All righty, thank you all so much for your service, and look like everybody is involved in something, and that's great. All right, we have no public, so, I mean, no comments, anything of that sort, so we are now ready to go into our reports, report by Board members, Board attorney, and the superintendent. We'll start with you, Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just, just one item, thanks, Ms. France, for sending that email with all the information about the deregulation legislation, if you haven't reviewed that, and it's quite voluminous, and I talked with, had talked with the superintendent before, got with Ms. France, but it's, they're proposing some pretty dramatic changes as far as deregulation, and, you know, I guess they've, there are three senators that, you know, are the primary people that the Senate President has appointed to, you know, work this through the process, and not everything's probably going to pass, but there are some good things in there, I think, that would help, you know, the public school systems, and in some cases, it'll give the charter schools and the private schools, you know, a leg up, but overall, it's nice to see, you know, going the other way, deregulating, so.
And that was part of the HB1, that was part of the, kind of the give and take on the vouchers, and then the public schools, you know, were able to, and that was a process too, come up with ideas for deregulation, so, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Yep, so, anyway, I'm about three-quarters of the way through it, and it's, like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of information. I don't know if they're going to have a breakout session at the conference or not on that, but, you know, the legislative session starts the second week of January, and, you know, they've already been holding committee meetings and everything. The one good, good, good thing that I have heard is that, you know, it looks like our budget is way, I mean, we're taking in way more revenue than what they projected as far as the revenue estimating conference, so, going to be an interesting session. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Wagner.
Well, I know we're all looking, I'm looking forward to the conference this coming week. We were just discussing that before our meeting. They really do provide, at least as a new Board member, they've provided a lot of information that has helped me understand the processes and everything of being on a school board, so I do appreciate the district sending us to those conferences, and, other than that, just looking forward to a happy Thanksgiving with family, and certainly urge everyone to be safe. They say the traffic, the travel is going to be outstanding this, this year in Florida, so everybody be safe and have fun with family.
And you doing the cooking?
I have not cooked Thanksgiving in probably 25 years, but I'm glad, because that means my mom is still, still going, and she makes a wonderful Thanksgiving every year, and I do Christmas, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Buckles?
I appreciate Phil, because for years, as a school superintendent, he was tremendously helpful to me in Tallahassee, helping me deal with and unravel some of the language and stuff that come through there, and I'm certain with these deregulations, you'll, you'll find what we can and can't do, and I feel very optimistic about that, but I know there's going to be a lot of, you know, ceremonies and things that people want to go to. I don't know how many I'll attend, because I'm just going to try to spend as much time with family over the holidays as I can, and enjoy that, and I hope everybody gets a chance, but like, like Linda said, the traffic is, is rough. It's, it's not just the airlines and everything going on, there's so many people coming to Florida, it's, it's incredible, the amount of traffic that we're dealing with now, even in Putnam County. I just, I'm amazed, and it's about the time you think the state of Florida's Department of Transportation is going to have our roads widened and fixed and surfaced, it's going to be time to put an additional lane on them. That's a never-ending job, but just to everybody be safe, and look forward to seeing the kids and teachers back in school.
Yeah, I guess that's a part of progress, traffic, but I can't deal with it either, like you. Mrs. Pickens?
I just have one little thing. The Veterans Day ceremony at Crescent City Junior Senior High School was amazing, and put on by the band and the ROTC, and they had, it was all student-led, you know, Master Sergeant doesn't really, he tells them beforehand, they practice, where they're supposed to go, but they had, a boy got up and spoke about each fold of the flag. I just thought they folded the flag up. I didn't realize that it was 13 folds, and each fold has a meaning, and then I did not know, again, that there were words to taps. I didn't know the history behind that, and, and I was really impressed, but it was a great program. The band was amazing, and the ROTC in their uniforms, it was just, it was better attended this year than it has been, but it could be even more so, and I think they took time to, every veteran that was in the stands, the young man went up and shook their hand and saluted them. Every single one gave them a flag, and it was just really well thought out, and I mentioned something to Mr. Adams afterwards about how, how good I thought the program, great, I thought it was, and he said every year, they try to add an extra little something special, and it was, it was amazing, so, and with that, I am cooking, and, which is pretty scary for the people that are going to eat, but Bill does the turkeys, though, so that Big Easy is a lifesaver. If I had to cook the turkey too, I'd really freak out, but I just, the first friend that I met when I started teaching at Crescent City Junior Senior High School is coming to Thanksgiving dinner, too, so I'm, I'm really excited. We have friends, family, and it's, it's going to be a big time, and, you know, hopefully, everybody will get fed.
You can tell she was a Boy Scout, because we had to learn, day is done, go in the sun, to work the taps, yeah, had to know all that stuff, yeah, how about that? But I understand why you wouldn't have been a Boy Scout.
No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't even eat Girl Scouts.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Pickens, and that's the only thing I had to mention under my report was that Veterans Day celebration down there, I too got the opportunity to attend, and it was everything that Mrs. Pickens said, that it was. What was even more impressive were the students, the ROTC students actually coming up, greeting us, walking us to where we were supposed to be, and, and the pride they took. You could see it in their faces and hear it in their voices, and so, things happen, wars break out and all of that, but with fine young men and young ladies like these that are being trained and coming up through the ranks, it makes you feel good, and so, I do say ditto to everything you say.
I just had to, I wanted to say, I thought the Palacan Daily News did a great job covering that.
Oh, yes.
And, sorry, I missed it, but what a great program, yeah, and then, you know, I was looking at this, this School Board Association agenda, and I was seeing the breakfast for the Northeast Florida group, which we had last year. Do we ever meet during the year, or is that just?
Didn't we have?
I mean.
Holly, wasn't that one that you went to in Union County?
A small, a small district?
No, 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 on the, this is the?
Well, we did have the small district, our, our, the crown group, no, that was.
Northeast Florida Coalition of School Boards breakfast meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that, that's not part of Chris Doolin's group, that's something else.
That's something else.
Well, feel free to join in those groups if you can.
No, find out first. I would find out if he, if I can. I wouldn't show up and then they.
We went to it last year. I'm just wondering if there's anything that, you know, we do during the year with other school boards in Northeast Florida. I know they had the, that program at Lake Butler.
Union County.
Yeah, Union County, but that really was more of a, more, a larger region.
Yes.
But be interesting to see, since there's such a dichotomy between all the different counties in Northeast Florida, but anyway.
And if this isn't something that is happening, I would suggest that you bring it up to, to, I mean, because it's worth it, to Tina and, well, Mrs. Pinker, Pinkerston, I just know as Tina Turner, and, and to, what's her name?
Director.
Andrea. Andrea, if you were bringing it up to them, because this sounds like, I mean, something that's worthwhile, that, that you do come together more than just at this, because people not possibly being able to attend, that's what I would suggest.
That's what she called.
Oh, she portrayed Tina Turner when, when I, when I went down to one of the conferences. Yes, she, she actually did the rolling on the river.
Well, that's just, you know.
Yeah, yes, yes, but she hadn't left us when Tina imitated her, so I'm sure she got permission to do it.
I got it.
But she was, she had it going on now, I'm telling you.
But to Phil's question, if you can get into any of those other meetings, we do pretty good with Chris's group in the small rural districts, but sometimes you pick up bits and pieces, and if you can get in, if Chris can get you in, it would be really neat to sit in on something like that, Phil.
Isn't the Northeast Florida, isn't that Bev Slough in, in St. John's?
Maybe.
Yeah, Bev Kilma, Bev Kilma.
Oh, Slough.
It used to be Beth, it used to be Beth Slough, Slu, Slough.
Yeah, that's it, that's, yeah, yeah. Anyway, sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, a great question. All right, my turn.
Well, I really didn't have anything to report at this time. I didn't even know I was coming to the meeting until an hour ago, so.
We're glad I had you.
Thank you for keeping us straight with the nominations.
And I did not realize it had been over a year when you were, you know, this time last year, wow.
Year and a half, almost.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Please try it. Yeah, my turn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I just have to say, I was very humbled and honored to represent Putnam County and our nation's capital a week or two ago. I mean, they forced me to go, so I did it, you know?
So you went back and forth.
Yeah, but I took my wife, and we had a good time, you know, as part of the Superintendent of the Year recognition, and we were there with all the other superintendents in the United States, and some of them could not be there, but I made some, you know, some great contacts, great friends, and it really is to be able to, you know, just talk to other people and see what their challenges are, and of course, every time I tell them I'm elected, they look at me like I've got two heads, you know, but, anyway, but it is a very educational thing. I've actually shared some information with our staff about some of the, the stuff that they share with us, so, thank you for, you know, allowing me to go. I really do appreciate it. Just a reminder, we are having our Christmas parade for Palacca Friday night, I believe, six or seven, seven o'clock, so I don't know if y'all are planning on riding it or whatever.
They're letting any political?
Well, I think as long as you don't put any campaign signs up.
Right, he did.
They are, I'm riding with the constitutional officers, so do you have the information?
I have the thing, yes, from Sam, deputy, yes, and, and so I had asked when we first got in if we were interested, and two are not going to be able to, and I've already committed, I'm going to be in the parade, but with my sorority, but that does not say that we don't, you know, aren't to be there and represent it, because.
If you need to ride a horse or something, I can get one.
No, thank you, no thank you, I bought it in the wall.
We got, my granddaughter's riding her horse, and anybody that wants to ride it.
And I'm praying I'm in front of the horses.
They're last.
They make the deposits, so I want to be in front.
They're last.
Just in case they kick at you.
The kick I might get to the boy.
Yeah, I think the message is clear.
Oh, this coming Friday.
Yeah.
Oh, this coming Friday.
And there are, there are a number of parades, have y'all seen the, the holiday parade schedule? I have, Susan can pull that up, it's on, I forget her name, but we get a list of those. So I guess.
Is that from Byers?
Yeah, yeah.
Crescent City is the second of December.
It's the same night, and that's in the morning in, insert lock-in, is it nine, I believe?
I think so.
Nine PM?
Whenever it's dark, it's before then.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, so.
So probably six.
But they'll have, they'll have that, they'll have Alacca on another Saturday, and they actually have two in Melrose on the same day.
No, no, they're different days.
They're different days.
Is it different days?
The daytime, which I believe we'll be seeing you at.
There are two?
Is the, the first or second weekend, and the 16th is the nighttime.
There are two, Melrose and Melrose on the same day.
So they have two? You have two?
Yes, we do.
If anybody's interested in the parades, whoops.
It must be Melrose and Alacca are the same day.
Let us go ride a motorcycle, pop wheelies in the?
Well, I don't know about wheelies, but I was thinking about the motorcycle.
You ought to do that.
Let me mention also, don't forget about our musical coming up, and that's going to be, Laura reminded me about that.
I think it's the December 8th, that weekend, I just have it up, sorry.
It's two weekends, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's a Christmas carol, right?
I thought it was December 1st, it's not some?
Yes, it might be the first Saturday. Yes, it might be the first Saturday.
Why did I don't see the L?
That was another year. If anybody needs to see the, the parades.
I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, she's going to forward it to you, the information, yeah. So, and by the way, when I was in Washington, I went to Joe's house, to his back door, and they wouldn't let me in. They had all these guys with guns there, and I just, well, I guess, guess he's not around, so.
I've been here.
He did walk around, and we stayed right by the White House.
I've been in there before, and it's not, it's not that big a deal, really.
And we saw Marine One, the helicopter laying right next to our thing, so it was quite a sight, yeah.
It's December first or tenth, is the reason.
Thank you, Laura.
December first, and then through the tenth, that's, I knew the tenth was one of the dates.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good stuff.
I took a trip with Ms. France up to Washington with a bunch of students on the train years ago, and I just won't even get into that, that was, that was, that was a trip, yes, but it's all good, we, we do what we have to do with our kids.
You know, they've got a, on a completely different topic, but there's a bullet train now that goes between Orlando and Miami, I thought somebody the other day that.
I did not know that.
Yeah, it's like a two-hour ride, but no traffic, you just zoom.
Wow.
But they're doing one, they're building one, I understand, between Orlando and Tampa, I guess, along that leg.
Excellent.
For those of you who don't like flying.
I don't care.
I don't know, I think that'd be pretty scary.
That's too fast, I mean, how do you stop that joke, by the time you started, you stopped it.
You're going to stick your foot on the ground and drag your toe like Linda does on a motorcycle.
Okay, Fred Flintstone, okay, Fred Flintstone.
You should try it, Holly, I think you'd make you like it.
I rode a train in Finland, and that's the last train I've been on, you know, for years.
Rough ride.
Right, it wasn't too bad, very calm. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Anything else to come before the Board, before we adjourn? As Mrs. Wagner said, and the others, you all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Love on your family, we just don't know. We always leave it at that, we just don't know.
And by the way, I mentioned a couple of y'all, but tomorrow's the 60th anniversary of the assassination of John F. Kennedy, for those of you that remember what you're doing that night, but doesn't seem possible, does it?
What year was it?
Sixty-three.
I can remember my teacher coming out crying, and I was playing basketball, and it, and a friend of mine, we, we weren't as concerned as the teachers were, but we did learn the gravity of it later on.
And, and they were tracking down.
Mosley School, Lee Harvey.
Vice President, they were tracking down Lyndon B. Johnson, yep.
It's a huge, huge problem.
I was at Mosley Elementary School, yeah.
I can, I can recall, I was in school, and with the Twin Towers, in school, I was in school as a student and then out at Price.
I was walking out ahead to Panama City to a superintendent's meeting out in Panhandle, and, and that's when I heard about the Twin Towers.
And then parents started coming, checking their children out, and I'm thinking.
What y'all talking about now, is it?
Nine eleven.
Nine eleven, yes, sir, we, we were saying the parallel school, we were as students the first one, and then.
Wow.
When the Challenger blew up, I was.
Oh, yes, yes, and the Challenger.
I was at Branding Pierce.
I was in the same, I was in the guidance suite at Crescent City for nine eleven and, and to Challenger.
I was in the old Branding Pierce Media Center over there.
It was lunchtime for us at Price, and I was watching students just kind of mingle, and, and Palmer, Ed Palmer came out, and with this look on his face.
Y'all remember what you're doing Pearl Harbor that time?